Good evening, all who are in attendance. Before we take the roll, we have two meetings tonight. We have a Public Housing Authority Commission as well as a study session, of which we'll be voting on those items on Thursday. So with that, clerk, please take the roll for the Public Housing Authority Commission's regular meeting.
Chairman Hartke.
Here.
Vice Chair Rowe.
Here.
Commissioner Dearman.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Orlando.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, we, first of all, is there any scheduled or unscheduled public appearances for tonight?
No, Mayor, I have not received any cards.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, we have two consent agenda items on our agenda tonight. How would you like to proceed? Commissioner Harris.
Yes, I would like us to approve the Public Housing Authority Commission's regular meeting for February 7, 2022, for the consent agenda items want into.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Ellis. All right, any recusals, comments, questions? Seeing none, please hold the commission.
Vice Chair Rowe.
Yes.
Commissioner Dearman.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Chairman Hartke.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, clerk. So that concludes our Public Housing Authority regular meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Dearman. Next on our agenda tonight is a city council's study session. Again, we'll be voting on these items on Thursday. Clerk, please take your role.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First on our, next on our agenda tonight is scheduled public appearances. Vice Mayor, would you please join me out in front? It's always a hard adjustment, those first meetings, who's the vice mayor after us? All right, we have service recognition, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We do have two service recognitions for employees this evening. For our first presentation, I'd like to call Sandeep Delokia, our Chief Information Officer forward.
Good evening, Mayor, respected council. Tonight, I'd like to invite Rochelle Farady, please join us up front to receive her 10-year service recognition. Rochelle joined 10 years ago with the city as Information Technology Applications Manager, and was recently promoted to the Chief Applications Officer. During her tenure here at the city, she's managed the technical teams that have been responsible for implementing a new utility billing system, excuse me, a custom tax and licensing application, things like the web license portal for the city businesses. She's implemented, the teams have implemented Chandleraz.gov website, enabled online appointment scheduling, implemented online citizen portal to interact with the city, deployed online payment portals, IVR technologies, of course, the most recent, big one, O365. In Rochelle's spare time, she enjoys traveling to Colorado, hiking, spending times with her family. Rochelle is truly passionate about the city of Chandler and her dedicated applications team. Congratulations Rochelle on your 10 years with the city, and here's to another 20.
Mr. Mayor, for our next recognition, I'd like to call John Knudsen, Public Works and Utilities Director Forward, to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'd like to invite Danny Avalos forward to accept his 10-year service recognition. In February 2012, Danny started his employment with the city of Chandler in the Parks Department. In 2015, Danny took on a new challenge in the Public Works and Utilities Department as a utility mechanic. Danny worked at the Ogatito Water Reclamation Facility, and in 2017, he came to the airport water reclamation facility where he has been stationed ever since. In 2018, Danny was promoted to Senior Mechanic. Danny has a proven track record as a dependable employee and is never afraid to take on new challenges and projects for the betterment of the plant. He has established himself as a competent and skilled technician who never shies away from taking on the lead on projects or facilitating advanced repairs on planned equipment. He always gives 100% effort towards his work. Danny provides exceptional customer service to both internal and external customers, and his upbeat attitude greatly contributes to the crew morale of the maintenance department. Danny, thank you for 10 years of hard work and dedication and commitment as a valued employee to the Public Works and Utilities Department, and like Rochelle, you only have 20 more years.
Mayor, that concludes our service recognitions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Next, we have a recognition, GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Like to hand it over to Deputy Dawn Lang.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. I would like to ask that Chandler's amazing accounting team come forward to be recognized. We have three with us this evening. I am happy to report that the city of Chandler has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the annual comprehensive financial report for the 39th consecutive year. Established in 1946, the certificate program recognizes state and local governments whose annual financial reports conform to high standards established by the Government Accounting Standards Board and the Government Finance Officers Association. The annual comprehensive financial report has become the nationwide standard for local government financial reporting. This report requires about four months of intense work. An annual report ensures full disclosure of the city's finances in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and is used by all three credit rating agencies to help in our assessment of the city's credit worthiness, and of course, we are AAA bond rated, so that helps. Here to accept the award for the preparation, and this is actually for the fiscal year 2019-20 annual comprehensive financial report, a little slow on the reviews due to COVID. Kristy Smith, our accounting manager, and our accounting supervisors, Tracy Schmidt and Robert Steele are here with us tonight. They are, they are truly amazing. Our thanks and appreciation to them, the entire accounting division, and our team members throughout the departments for their hard work and dedication to this very important effort. Well done.
I might have been known to go up to total strangers and say, "Do you know that Chandler's the best-run city in all of Arizona?" for things just like this. And so, I will probably continue to do that. So thank you for all of our finance team and just Team Chandler for keeping us known as the city that really garners these types of awards, but really handles our taxpayer dollars wisely. So thank you. Next, we have a proclamation. All right, our next proclamation has to do with women's health and heart disease. Proclamation, "In the United States, heart disease is the number-one killer of women, causing 1 in 3 deaths each year, approximately 1 woman every 80 seconds. And whereas, on average, Arizona nearly 16 women die every day from heart disease or stroke. And whereas, women have a higher lifetime risk of stroke than men, with different heart attack symptoms that are often misunderstood. And whereas, an increase in community awareness is necessary to encourage everyone to 'go red', because 80% of cardiac events can be prevented with education and lifestyle changes. And whereas, we encourage our community to make a change for better health with physical activity, healthy eating, monitoring blood pressure, and teaching children the importance of staying active and making healthy food choices. And whereas, the city of Chandler encourages everyone to be part of the American Heart Association's national movement to end heart disease and stroke in women. Now therefore, I, Kevin Hartke, Mayor of the city of Chandler, Arizona, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Go Red for Women Month." Councilmember Ellis and I got the memo. Oh, I'm, take it back. All right. Man, there are no slackers on Chandler City Council. With that, perhaps we can do a picture with the person if they show up afterwards? Or should we just do it? What do you think, Stephen? All right. So, we'll take a picture with them afterwards. If nothing else, you'll still get us. That concludes our upfront stuff tonight. I just read a proclamation, we laughed, we cried, we enjoyed it. Do you have any additional comments to make that weren't part of mine? No.
Sorry for the, thank you, sorry for my tardiness. So the American Heart Association is so thankful for the opportunity to have Chandler help us promote the fact that 1 in 3 men and 3 women will die of heart disease. I can't remember how many years we've been doing this, but it's a, it's an important cause, and you read the details of how important it is in our community, so thank you.
And thank you for continuing to bring this before us. We agree, it's extremely important. Let's take a picture. Council, we have quite a few different items called in for either comment, questions, or presentations. So I will start with number 8 and 16 by Councilmember Stewart, looking for a brief staff presentation and information about fireworks provision. So Derek.
Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart.
I'm good on 8, but I'm sure Derek's presentation will be riveting, so maybe, is that included?
If you could just cover 16, that would be great.
Whatever the pleasure of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Community Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Stewart, did you want a presentation or just a question on the fireworks?
Well, I just had a question mainly on the, I was looking in the, in number 16, and I went a little bit deeper in to see the summary, and it doesn't delve into where fireworks will be prohibited. And thank you for the phone call, by the way, on Friday. We talked at length about sort of some of the challenges with this and some of the things that we're facing. So maybe you can kind of give us an update on kind of where this came from, or what your, what our goal is here, and then maybe talk a little bit more about the streets part of this. Right, because that's the thing I really had some consternation about.
Absolutely. So tonight, ordinance number 4994 is adopting the 2021 Fire Code, and with that are specific local amendments. One of the areas that we have to look at tonight is the fireworks, and that's because they have added dates at the state, which requires us to add them within this ordinance. I can tell you, as we wrote this, what we did was we included information that prohibits fireworks from being used in any buildings publicly owned or managed land, facilities, city offices, public parks, parking lots, public school buildings, retention basins, roads, streets, and sidewalks. This language, this exact language, was actually adopted by a previous council here in Chandler on June 26, 2014, ordinance 4548. That's when we first adopted this language, when we, when fireworks were legalized. In the adoption of our 2015 Fire Code, April 14, 2016, ordinance number 4698, this exact language was adopted again. On December 10, 2018, ordinance number 4835, which adopted the 2018 Fire Code, there was an accident where it was, it was deleted inadvertently, that specific language. And so what we're coming with you, here tonight, is, one, we're adopting the 2021 code, but we are putting that language back into this ordinance. This language, right now, if you look at our website, if you look at a lot of the things that we push out to our business community, our citizens, it already says this right now, that it is prohibited in these areas. So we are just trying to make sure that we are in alignment with what we are pushing out to the community and put it back into the ordinance.
Mayor.
All right.
I do have, I do have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Josh, maybe this question for you. Can we amend that part about the roads and streets? Because many families, many folks set up their legal fireworks in their cul-de-sacs, the Bali celebrations, Cinco de Mayo, events like that. This would essentially codify them not being able to use their neighborhood streets, whether that's HOA or regular city land. Can we talk about, maybe create an amendment to remove that language?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, you're in a study session format tonight, so you're discussing these items. So if that was the council's direction, this would be the time to give it to us, and we would make that change for Thursday before you voted, but it would have to come as direction from council tonight to make that change.
Councilmember Ellis.
Councilmember Stewart, can you make it very clear what you are asking? Because I believe.
Sure, go ahead and finish your question.
If you could just make it very clear what exactly you are asking, because this amendment, that were already in codes consecutively many ordinance before, and so it didn't really stop people from doing it. I don't know if it's going to stop them now, as far as doing it in the, in front, in front of their yard, or things like that, in their driveway, because we don't have driveways in there, do we?
Through the Mayor, Councilmember, we do not have driveways in here. It actually requires you to use public or private property to light up the fireworks.
Correct.
Is that safe?
These are consumer-based fireworks.
Yes.
Right, would that be safe for people to use their private? Wouldn't you want it away from the homes?
I, I would suggest you have clearance anytime you're lighting off fireworks. I can't say that it's safe to light them off in any capacity, but certainly, the more clearance you have, the better.
Sure. So to clarify my question, I want to be able to remove the language of streets and roads from this particular part of the ordinance, so that people can still use the street and the roads during the allotted time that the state allows for people to shoot off fireworks, so that if 10 years, 20 years from now, if somebody gets stopped and gets picked on for fireworks, whether it's legal or not, that we don't have somebody give them a hard time or give them a ticket because it's codified in language? So let's just remove that, so that they can do that freely.
A city attorney, can you give us some guidance into this area here? Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Ellis. Generally, we prohibit anything on the road other than driving for safety reasons. I believe there's permits if somebody wants to block off a portion of a road for a party, and then safety precautions are put in place. But as the city attorney and risk manager, I have to express some concern about allowing people to go onto the streets to set off fireworks or engage in other activities that may not be complimentary to cars driving on it. So, so I think if somebody wanted to have a party, there's ways to do that, and ways to do it safely. And putting the prohibition that the chief just talked about in there would not preclude that ability to go and get a permit. So if somebody wanted to get a permit and block off the street to have a party and set off legal fireworks, this language would not prohibit that.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm sorry, let's go a little further with that. Is there something about permitting where they can have fireworks in the cul-de-sac in front of their home? Do we have that available now?
Mayor, if I may, Vice Mayor, through, there is a permitting process that would allow for that. And again, going through that permitting process, then safety precautions are taken to block off the street and post-notice and things like that.
And, and I'm sorry, could this apply to some other areas, like a retention basin or some of these other areas, potentially? I'm thinking in terms of these national night out events or getting to know your neighbors, type things like that.
I can answer that.
And I think that, I think the real issue with the fireworks is mostly about people that are using prohibited fireworks. Am I right about that?
Correct. Through the Mayor, Vice Mayor, you are correct. That is, that is what we're looking at, is the illegal fireworks. As far as, can somebody light these consumer-based legal fireworks within the dates that specified? They can. If they're going to go outside of those dates, then there is a permitting process, and through the Office of the Fire Chief, through the Fire Marshal, we have the option to grant them a permit, which we have done. We have done in 2021, we have granted permits to people. What we do is we ensure that, one, they're legal fireworks, and obviously, the area that we look at, as far as where they're going to light those off, and make sure that those are all, you know, private property, the things that they should, you know, should be in place for that. And so, that process exists, we've utilized that process. So it is always an option, and it is actually in the code.
So, anytime, any day of the year, somebody could say, "I'd like to have, I want to do this in the cul-de-sac", and, and we could help them permit that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so Diwali is a holiday where, it's a five-day holiday. It's, I think this year is October 24th. On the third day, they celebrate with fireworks. And so that's usually who requests the permits. And yes, we do grant those to them, as long as they are consumer-based fireworks.
Thank you.
I've got a question either for you or perhaps David with our police department, is, again, I know we recently met and talked about how can we create more deterrence to illegal fireworks? Would this, in essence, creating one more obstacle, would this be a little easier to internally track or prohibit people from illegal or at least getting reported if neighbors are seeing people shooting off fireworks in the street? I think sometimes it almost gets overwhelmed on, certainly on New Year's and some other nights, but is this, is this a deterrent heading us in a, in a better direction?
I would, I would turn that over to the chief as far as enforcement.
I would say that certainly provides more education for our folks as far as what's legal and what's not. You know, I can tell you that the department, while we never take discretion away from our officers, they assess the situation and make a decision based on what they have. The overall culture that we have is one of education through warnings, and we're reasonable. We want people to have a good time, so, I don't know if that answers it, but I think it could put us in that right direction.
Okay, so a little more education could be. Obviously, we're not going to be just handing out citations if this, but it would allow us perhaps a little, one more warning step for people with fireworks. And again, if they're illegal, that's its own question, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Culture today is amazing, and this isn't a concern for today. This is a concern from years from now, when we have codification that would allow for ticketing of, and that could happen. So it's a great point that you make, Mayor. I had a couple of questions, though. On the permitting process, there'd be a fee to that, right? So it's a tax to light off fireworks?
Mayor, Councilmember, there is a fee if we go out and inspect. And so what we have, the individual do is fill out a form. Based on that form, that lets us know whether we need to go out and inspect. Normally, it's consumer-based fireworks, and so there is no inspection required. And so then there is no fee.
There's no fee for a permit? How is that handled online?
It's online, and then it goes through our special events process. It gets kicked to the fire department. We make contact with the responsible party. There's a lot of information on the form that they have to fill up, but we follow up with them, and as long as they're using the consumer base, then there is no need for any inspections.
So, play this out with me, just, just a guy here. If we're, if I go out in the street and I'm setting off regular fireworks, what council's asking us is to get a permit to do that? Just for the legal fireworks that the state's already said we can do?
Through the Mayor, Councilmember, if you are outside of the legal dates set forth by the state, then yes, you absolutely.
Oh, of course. But during the legal dates, we can set fireworks off in the street?
Right now, you can.
But not when we implement this?
According to this ordinance, it is prohibited.
So that's what I want to remove. So, I'll call the question myself.
So Mayor, Councilmember, make a suggestion to the Councilmember. Have staff write up amendment, bring this forward. We'll vote on the amendment, and we move forward.
Perfect.
All right.
Sold.
But, okay.
Second.
All right. City manager, you could look at something that might address his concerns, and we could look at it, because I think otherwise, we're going to be all over the place in terms of what are we addressing.
Because, good Mayor.
Good decision.
Yeah, because, because the other thing is, I could argue, I'd rather have these in the retention basins where there's grass and other things, but then that causes a fire, so we could take this on and on and on and on. And I definitely don't want our streets destroyed. I definitely don't want a car involved that's going to get, maybe get an explosion. So bring it forward, we'll discuss it, and we'll make a decision. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll do that, thank you.
Mayor, are we taking it off the consent agenda for tomorrow?
I was just going to ask, city attorney, is there a way to approve these on Thursday? Minus that one, make an amendment or make a motion to, and then go back to that? I don't know the timeliness necessary on this.
Just making an action item, Mayor.
We can make an action item, we can work through it. So the, I think we have clear direction, so we'll make sure it works on Thursday.
So on Thursday, we'll be voting on this as an action item. Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, works for you, Councilmember?
Perfect.
Thanks, Danny. All right, our next is item number 10, brought forth by Councilmembers Harris and Ellis. If I could ask for a presentation by the applicant, and then you two can start our questions. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lauren Proper Potter, PO Box 1833, Tempe, Arizona. I have a presentation that's ready to go up here, but I don't think that you see it yet. Is there something I need to do over here? Perfect, okay, great. It's just been a while since I've gotten to control my own PowerPoint here. So I'm here this evening regarding the Midway Project. We're requesting preliminary development plan approval and a plat. I'm sure you're familiar with the site, but I'll just give you a brief overview here. It's located at the northeast corner of Jermaine and Hamilton Road. This kind of gives you a little bit of perspective here. You can see it's near the airport and the Loop 202. Here's another, a little bit closer image here, you can kind of see the area around it. The zoning is currently PAD, it was approved in 2001. The general plan designation is for employment. You could see the proximity to the airport. It is part of the Chandler Air Park Area Plan, and the designation in the Air Park Area Plan is as an innovation district area. It calls for low to moderate intense. It calls for low to moderate intensity, flexible, creative office and other uses. We're proposing three individual flex industrial buildings on the site consistent with this designation. And this is a slide I sold from your staff, Lauren, who's done a great job working with us through this process. She's been amazing. Part of what we've gone through as we've worked through the process with staff was making sure that the project was going to be compatible with the airport operations. And so, some of the things that we have attempted to work through, and I think we've done that here tonight, and Lauren could speak to that, is addressing glazing and other issues. And so, when we got to the airport commission, we are happy to say that they found no conflict. It was a unanimous decision. That was in January. And we went to the planning commission shortly thereafter. Again, unanimous decision, recommendation for approval. The preliminary development plan, I've got some, well, it's a little distorted here for you guys, but I have some site plans here that show you generally what the configuration is going to look like. Each of these three buildings have their own outdoor areas. And as part of this project, we're going to be completing Armstrong Way. It's on the northern portion of the site. I think that's the top of the slide here. So the buildings are tilt-up concrete, they're pretty modern look. They feature some wood materials and other accents. That was another thing that we worked with staff on to ensure that the buildings had a clean, modern appearance that was consistent with some of the design guidelines in the air park. I just have a few renderings for you. And here are some of the materials, if you have any additional questions on these. But so, there, it's not just tilt-up concrete plain, it's going to be painted a variety of colors, are all pretty neutral palette. And then you can see here, we have some stone veneer as well. So I've prepared a brief presentation. I knew there were some questions, so with that, I'll conclude and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mia.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I think my concern tonight, what I wanted to really hear from you, you didn't address, is timing, timing and when it's going to start, when you guys are going to continue to push the project through and how that's going to go. The second thing, I'm going to give you my questions and then you can answer them as you go. You're going to be right there in the corridor where we have a park that is heavily used by youth and those who are just starting to drive. And do you, have you put things in place to make sure that we don't have any accidents and things like that in that area with having all those loading, big trucks coming in and coming out from that area? So I would like to know if there is a lot of thought forwards toward that as far as protection for those drivers on the road from there. And then the last one is, I just want to make sure that this, this project is going to go through. You know, I want to know, I want to know, I want to be reassured by LGE that this project is going to go through. Those are my questions.
Excellent, thank you, councilmember Ellis. So I'll address those. I think I wrote these down correctly. So, your first question relates to timing. You know, we'd love to get construction underway as soon as possible. Of course, that requires approval by the council. And we're prepared, I believe that we've already started the construction document process at risk, and Lauren might know the specifics of that, but we're ready to go. So, as soon as we can get through this process, again, we're requesting your approval for these items, they'll be very important. We'll also have to come forward with another plat, so that'll be at the next meeting, because preliminary is going to be on Thursday. But I think that the timeframe we're on is very aggressive and we love shovels in the ground as quickly as possible as it relates to timing. I couldn't tell you if it's six months or 12 months, but we're interested in getting, moving as quickly as possible. As it relates to traffic and protection, this is something that the other Lauren has been great about. Again, this is part of the process that's been so nice working through with your staff. So Lauren has raised those concerns. We've limited access to the site, so there's nothing directly off of Germaine. The access is going to be only on Hamilton, so Collector. And there most, there's two entrances on Hamilton. One is a little bit closer to the intersection there. The other one is further north, so it's quite a distance from Germaine. And then the other entrance is going to be off of Armstrong Way. So that's a pretty low traffic road. I think that that kind of takes into consideration some of those traffic concerns. And then, to make sure the project goes through, I don't personally guarantee them, so it's not, it's not my money, I'm not in control of it. But I have assurances that, that there is a strong interest in getting this project done quickly, efficiently. And as, as far as I know, this project will happen, assuming that it's approved by this council.
Well, I'm going to use your word, you don't have dates. You can't tell me six months or 12 months, but you used the word aggressive and I'm going to keep you to that. That word aggressive, I wrote it down and I'm going to keep LGE to it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, these projects, they often come to us as council and, and as you can see, I'm a new councilmember and I believe this project was approved while, way before I was the council member currently right now. But I did have a couple of questions that I would probably like to ask you and maybe you can probably go into further detail. I wanted to better understand the traffic. I know that you mentioned to it, but in terms of the vehicles, because just as councilwoman Ellis have alluded to, that, you know, we have young drivers from the time that the project was approved to now. We have way more student drivers in our communities, especially moving south. And there were, I believe there was about 28 loading docks that I was looking at with this particular project. And I was concerned that we have 28 semi-trucks, you know, what that looks like. And then, have we had time to evaluate the environmental impacts to our community, especially in South Chandler, where there will be, you know, those fumes and gas and all that other good stuff? And have we had time to really look at, look at that, you know, what type of usage? My other question was, is that have you already sought out tenants? Do you already have tenants prepared for that? If so, who are they? And I wanted to also, just, you know, also talk about the landscaping of the project as well. I just see little bushels and things like that. I think that doesn't represent South Chandler, so maybe you can add some more, you know, some more pizzazz to that. And then also, to me, it's big that we are a city of innovation and I didn't really see any, you know, like, you know, supercharger stations, you know, because these trucks, you know, we ain't talk about trucks remaining idle and what that looks like when they remain idle and, and on that level. Also, lastly, and then you can just, it alluded to councilwoman Ellis, I'd just like to know start and finish dates, because I think that's important, because land are often locked up. We like to know when projects can be completed. As you can see, Chandler has, since I've been on council, Chandler has grown by nearly 30,000 people since I've been on council. Since this project been improved back in 2001, you're talking maybe 100,000 more people. And oftentimes, we, we have developers and builders lock up land and then all of a sudden, they're ready to build it. And I don't, I don't know exactly, you know, today, because I'm voting for things today, to look forward to tomorrow, what that actually looks like with 100 and some thousand more people from the time that the project was approved till now. And so that's, that does raise a concern. So, I've shared some of my concerns or some of my questions that I have for you. Are you prepared to answer those questions or do you feel like there needs to be more time to get those answers back to me?
Thank you, councilmember Harris. I think that I do have good questions for you tonight. Some of them, I won't be able to probably give you the answer you want to hear, but I'm going to do my best. And I appreciate, I can tell you've thought a lot about this, done a lot of studying, so I thank you for that. And we will be back again on Thursday, so you're not rid of us yet. You'll see us in a few days. So, anything that's not, that I'm not answering satisfactory to your, what you're looking for, I can do some digging, I can try to get you some better answers on Thursday. So, although we'd love to keep it on consent if that's possible, but I'm happy to do, look into any of these items for you if you need some additional information. So, I think I wrote these down. And loading docks, councilmember Ellis, you mentioned that, I'm sorry, I did not answer that. So, as it relates to, and you had mentioned, councilmember Harris, loading docks and traffic. So, what we've done is, we have, and this was again, and I, and we worked with your professional staff on, Lauren was great. We've, we've placed the loading docks towards the back of the buildings. I'm going to see if I have a site plan that demonstrates this. So, they're oriented towards the back of the buildings. This may not be the best way to show it, so I can on Thursday be prepared maybe with an elevation that demonstrates this better. But the goal is to orient these away from the street. So these aren't, you don't see the loading docks when you're driving by. We've done our best to make sure that the image that you see from the street is an appropriate image for this area. You see these high-end buildings, they'll look very good. You're not going to look at the, the back of a bunch of industrial buildings with loading docks everywhere. So, that's what we've done in order to kind of screen that from the street. As it relates to traffic from the loading dock, so 28 loading docks, I don't know if that's the exact number, I'll take your word for it and I'll, I'll look into it, but it's not going to generate an inordinate amount of an increase in traffic there. I know that Hamilton is designed to be a collector. The traffic out there right now, it's pretty low volume just because of how close it is to the freeway. So, I think that the street has been designed in a way that can accommodate the traffic that we're proposing. Just to give you an idea of, about how many people we expect out here, about 350 parking spaces. Most people will probably travel alone. So that's, you know, 350 people, it's, you know, that's going to be a trips that are added in the morning and in the evening, but it's not an amount that's triggered any additional requirements with your staff as they've reviewed it. So, I feel confident that the street's designed to handle the amount of traffic that we're proposing to add here. Site's about 17 acres, so if another use, you know, I'm so happy to hear that Chandler's interested in adding additional residents and we've been here before with residential projects and then told you're looking for more industrial and office projects. And so that's what we have here today. You know, it's 17 acres, certainly, a residential project would generate quite a significant more amount of traffic than the address really use here. We believe it's appropriate for the site, it's appropriate for the area, it's consistent with the vision, with what was approved in 2001. And then, so I, your next question related to environmental impacts. I'm happy to do some additional digging into some specifics on that for you. I, I'm not aware of any plans to have superchargers on site or anything like that. That's something I'm going to do some digging into. And then as it relates to landscaping, let's see if I can get the presentation up here. I do have a slide here, we're doing some significant landscaping along the streets. It may look small on the plan because the site is 17 acres. It all kind of looks small when it's compressed here, but there's a significant amount of landscaping along all of the street sides. The little symbols you see, they're actually big trees. And so, we're proposing a variety of trees. I think it's six different species that'll all be very well-planted along those street frontages. So, I, I hope it doesn't seem as, as far as it is, but I'm happy to get you kind of a blown-up image of the landscape plan as well. And then, so, you had asked about innovation and superchargers, so I'm going to do some digging into that for you, but as far as I understand, there's no plan to have superchargers on the site. And then, I know you want firm start and finish dates and I wish I could give those to you, but there's just so much up in the air in terms of review time at the city, getting plans turned around and completed. And there's still ongoing supply chain shortages, so it's just really difficult to give you a very firm date. I can try to give you some estimates that might say, if we're approved by council on Thursday and we get construction drawings in on a specific date, what would that term, like the end date look like? I'm happy to dig into that for you a little bit.
Yeah, I think that when, when I talk about traffic concerns, you know, I'm thinking about my residents. When I say traffic concerns is because we're not talking about cars that may produce, you know, a lot of volume of traffic. We're talking about big semi, huge, huge trucks that is in the community driving. And I don't know about you, but to listen to multiple semi-trucks rattling at the same time creates a very loud, loud noise, which disrupts, which may disrupt people from afar off. I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, we're doing a good job and thinking about our neighbor. And yes, it's by the airport and yes, it's already loud over there, but yes, we, I know that these trucks have to get to that location. And I'm thinking about that person that has to work early in the morning or late at night, as you indicated, that the traffic will be in the morning when all, when everybody in the city of Chandler is moving around, including our children. But I'm also thinking about the evening that you alluded to, that all our city Chandler residents coming back to and our children's traveling to at times. So both times that you did mention, you know, there's these huge trucks with these drivers on there. And my, my daughter, she's going to be traveling, she's going to be driving really soon. So I just think about those things and just making sure that we have that timing, you know, the traffic timing, circulation, making sure that that is, that is on point. I think that is, thinking about the city of Chandler and our, being a good neighbor and being a good community. So that way, you know, when these, again, when these plans are approved, they're approved sometimes before me as a new councilmember is here. And so, the city may have been in a different place at that time, but now today, we're in a different, we're in a more congested city now. And so now, we have to think a little bit different about how we move forward. And so I wanted, I wanted LGE to take some more time to consider the community and making sure that they thought about all these different things that I mentioned, because it's important to the city residents. They feel that these partners and these developments that are coming in are considering and making our community first and making sure. So, if you can be so kind, including with the renderings, I can't understand that. I need something that shows me exactly what that looks like. I don't understand big green versus little green, so apologize, I'm not, that's not where I'm, that's not my level of expertise. But those are the things I would like you all to come back to us with. And if it takes more time, I'm okay with the time that it takes. I just want to make sure that I can properly communicate this to constituents that may reach out to me to talk about this project and why we may have 350 more large trucks coming in.
Mayor. So I have councilmember Stewart, vice mayor Rowe, and then councilmember Orlando. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, councilmember Harris and Ellis. Great questions. My, my main question is about electric vehicles and people being, we have the largest percentage of Teslas or electric vehicles of any city in, in the state in Chandler. And so people that will work at this location will, will need places to charge there. And then, now we're moving into electric vehicles with Nicoli, trucks and things like that, they'll be moving transportation. I know that's not a big thing today, but five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, if this project is moved forward, this will be something that will be needed. So if the conduit could at least be run, so that those can be set up at a later date if needed, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Stewart. Definitely take it back to the team, it's something we'll discuss and look into.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you and thank the development folks for some little nicer architecture. And so, as you all do future projects for the city, I hope that you will always be looking for something that's innovative and different. And thank you all for trying to make Chandler a little bit cooler. Thank you.
Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. Lauren, right? I'm sorry.
Correct.
Okay. Will these have cross docks or are these just regular docks for smaller trucks to delivery?
Councilmember Orlando, I'm going to have to look into that for you. I don't know the exact size of the docks and how they're designed. We could invite another Lauren up.
Well, she probably anticipated this question.
Through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, the docks are, will not be cross-docked. They're, they offer a variety of at-grade and dock doors.
Good, so we don't want, there won't be the heavier trucks or at least mass movement we think there should be on this project? Second question, Lauren or Lauren, whoever, whoever, Lauren two, Lauren one. Are this, are these being designed to basically chop up if necessary? Is that why so many docks are there?
So, the, thank you, councilmember Orlando. They're designed to be flexible. So, yes, they could be changed as needed. They're designed to, they could incorporate a little bit more office. We've provided some excess parking there. So, they're, they're designed to be used as tenants come in and have different needs.
Which has been our philosophy now for the last year, year and a half, staff. We've been looking at flexible buildings versus just putting in a building and expecting, you know, a warehouse. But these things have been designed, well, like I said, the last staff, I'm looking at Derek here, for the last year and a half or so, we've been encouraging this type of design so that you could do this. And so that, the flexibility, I've always thought that was, that was a smart idea, because we just don't know where the industry's going in the future and be able to convert these buildings to offices or other uses, that's why we're doing this.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, councilmember Orlando. And in, in keeping in line with the innovation district, that's part of the new Chandler Air Park Area Plan. that's part of the new Chandler Air Park area plan. We wanted to make sure that it would be something that could be utilized as needs change in the future. And we, you see us often, usually Charles up here, um, so we do listen and, and we've heard you loud and clear asking for things like this in the past. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
So Lauren, I've got two questions as well. Piggybacking on Councilmember Stewart, so you wouldn't be opposed to a step that would put in some charging stations in there?
I'm gonna run that back to the team. I wish I could unilaterally, yeah.
Lauren, Lauren.
If I could, um, Mayor, um, currently under the, the current stipulation, stipulation number nine reads, a minimum of one electric vehicle charging station shall be provided at each building. So currently there's a stipulation in there requiring at least one per building.
So out of the, out of the three hundred or so, would you, um, consider doubling that for us? That's a minimum requirement, I would think.
Definitely consider it. I'm gonna bring it back to the team. I'm gonna see if we could, um, provide, I think, so we've agreed to three. So we'll look at providing six.
Great. And secondly, there were a couple of questions just concerning truck traffic. And so I, I think you could probably alleviate some of our concerns. Where do you see the trucks coming and going from?
So.
Were they, is Armstrong Way gonna punch through or would they be Jermaine and then Hamilton? Or how do you see the traffic flow in and out of there?
Thank you, Mayor.
Not related to just people going to work, but your truck traffic.
Right, exactly. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Armstrong Way will be completed as part of our construction. Uh, so there would be full circulation. I imagine that trucks probably utilize generally Hamilton and Jermaine just due to the, it'll have easier access, be more direct to the freeway as well.
So for exit, will Armstrong Way actually connect with Arizona Avenue? Or will it just kinda go further into the, that area north of there, south of the freeway?
We're finishing the half-street. I'm not sure if it goes all the way to Arizona Avenue. Get the other Lauren up.
Lauren.
Oh, I thought I had an exhibit in here showing it. But to just kind of walk you through, um, as part of their development, uh, the full street along Hamilton would be improved to, uh, have a two, two-way drive with sidewalk curb and gutter. As part of this project, um, LGE would then also develop, uh, along Armstrong. Uh, so there'd be enough for two drive along there. There's a small segment between the city yard and this, this property that hasn't been connected yet. We've been working with the, uh, capital improvement, um, division to figure out a timing to get that in sooner rather than later. Uh, recently, last year, there was E-Lux at McQueen. It was a multifamily development. As part of that development to get access to McQueen, they, um, are to install a traffic signal. Um, and so, yes, at a, at a ultimate future build-out of this area would, would allow, uh, Hamilton, trucks to use Hamilton to get back to McQueen, as well as, you can't see it on here. Once the dairy to the north comes in for development, uh, that would connect all the way up to Willis. Thus getting traffic all the way out to, uh, Arizona Avenue, allowing for two directions of, to get back to the highway.
So really, a lot of the truck traffic, although today it might go on Jermaine, it really is a, a, a foreseeable future in the near future that earlier they have direct access right turning in off of McQueen into there or going straight up to Willis and then probably a left or right at a light. Okay, thank you. Council, any additional questions? Vice Mayor.
Okay, so on this, uh, diagram, the, uh, that route out to Armstrong, out to McQueen, that is, that is a pretty objectionably close traffic light out onto McQueen right there at the freeway. Are we comfortable with?
We already approved it.
Approved that? Well, I'm talking about the traffic for the eighteen-wheelers.
Yeah. So, so your question is more.
Yeah, I don't care if they go out on Jermaine or in other direction, but my concern is about the traffic getting out at that light. Because that was already, that was a poor decision to put a light there in the first place. But given that we did, um, the eighteen-wheelers, that's kind of a, how have we thought about that?
I feel ouch, so.
Anyway, what thought have we given to that?
That would be Lauren two.
You could be Lauren one if you want.
Without my traffic engineer here, um, you know, the discussion about, uh, a light at Armstrong and McQueen was a long discussion. Um, I actually made a baby in that time and there was a conversation. It started prior. It was a long conversation, uh, so there was a lot of consideration taken into it. Um, the, the amount of, of, of trucks that would generally take that route back would probably use, uh, Jermaine versus using, uh, the Hamilton. Um, another reason that that signal was, uh, looked at as a possibility for, uh, the property to the north right here. Per our, our Chandler Air Park area plan update, you know, we listened to some of the uses that, uh, council wanted in this area. And there was a discussion about, you know, offices and first-class type offices. And this was one of the properties that was looked at to, uh, allow for those types of users. Uh, so by allowing, or by being able to install a light at that intersection allows whoever comes in and develops that property in the future, the ability to, um, be able to head back north to the two oh two, uh, without that signal at Armstrong alignment. Um, they would be limited to right in, right out at that, that office development.
Council, additional questions? Vice Mayor.
So, anyway, for me, I just think it's a, a right, a southbound right in onto Armstrong makes a lot of sense. And I don't know if that can get worked out, and maybe it can't. But I, I would say that it, it isn't good to have eighteen-wheelers going out into that intersection, that close to the freeway. I mean, we had all this trouble at Alma School, uh, south of the freeway. And I, and I feel like, anyway, it's just, I think it's bad. And so if there's some way that could be addressed, I would love to hear that.
Take that into consideration.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes, um, my, I guess my, um, question is, is that would LGE develop the roads prior to, would the roads be developed prior to the construction site being built? Or are we talking vice versa?
Councilmember Harris, they usually happen at the same time, just to realistically coordinate all of the construction on site. So you may notice a difference of a month or two, but we're not talking a difference of a year or two.
Okay.
Councilmember Stewart.
Josh, would, on the, um, on an intersection like that, that, uh, Councilmember Rowe is talking about, the taxpayer will be funding the development or will that be handled by impact fees, um, to build that, that intersection light?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, and Lauren can correct me if I'm wrong. I think with that traffic signal, that was done during a previous development case that came before you was approved. And that is being, I believe, funded by the developer, uh, as part of that construction. So that will be installed by them when that development goes forward.
That is correct. Uh, through the mayor, um, city manager, the, um, uh, the installation of that light wa, is being paid for by the developer of the multifamily property.
Josh, I don't know how you remember this stuff. It's amazing.
Council, any additional questions related to this case?
Um, yes, Mayor. Just, uh, thank you. Just wanna make sure that all my questions, please, um, get answered, get back with me. Um, if there needs to be additional time, please, um, feel free to, to get that additional time. Because I wanna make sure that this is, um, you know, this is up to what I, what I deem to be Chandler standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. We do think that we've spent a lot of time and your staff has spent a lot of time, um, working through a lot of these issues over many, many months. So, um, I'm, feel confident I have the answers to your questions. I just did not put them in a presentation tonight. But we'll make sure that we're ready to discuss those on Thursday.
Mayor, um, I would prefer to have those answers prior to the Thursday discussion. I don't want to be left without, uh, my answers, um, because we're voting on Thursday. So I think it should be important to you to get that information to us prior to Thursday.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
All right, I, I think I've said Lauren more times in the last ten minutes of my lifetime. Thank you, Lauren. All right, next, uh, item is item number twelve. Councilmember Orlando, did you get your question answered on this?
Yeah, twelve and thirteen. Mayor, real quick, on twelve, um, I'm a little more concerned about what's going on with the neighborhood issues. Staff could kinda give us an update to that.
Related to the continuance or?
Yeah, I wanna, yeah, I wanna know what's, uh, what's happening.
Okay.
Please.
Through the mayor, good evening. Uh, thank you, Councilman Orlando for the question. I'm happy to update you on that. Um, this is for the Kerry's Car Care item, and the applicant has requested to be continued so that they would have more time to reach out to the residents. Uh, it is a auto service garage that's being proposed, and the residents have concern about the noise levels. So the applicant has performed a sound study and hosted another neighborhood meeting last week to share that information with the residents and start to resolve the concerns.
Sorry about that. The big issue was the sound, sound issue, and there are working on the sounding of that, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I guess the question, we haven't seen any, I haven't seen any traffic on that at all. So I'm assuming they're just waiting for their due diligence, their residents, because they haven't contacted, at least I don't have contact.
They, they have performed the sound study and they've shared it with the residents, and next they're making, uh, revisions based on that.
Oh, so they, okay, they'd have a second meeting with the sound study now making res, got it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, Councilmember Orlando.
Yeah, the map, I talked to Derek this morning. The map was a little bit, um, I don't know. It wasn't very, the resolution on the map wasn't very well. And so I could, did confirm, it's not six buildings, it's just six plots. That's what I, as I would say, where are you gonna stick a six building in there? It was pretty con, compact as it is, so we was able to clarify that.
All right, item number fifteen, Councilmember Orlando, asking for a briefing on timeline reconciliation.
On this one, our new deputy assistant, what, what is deputy assistant? Deputy assistant, got it. We had a nice conversation today. Obviously, we are concerned about this issue, particularly what happened in August, and I know staff's on this. Uh, wanna get this study done as soon as possible and then bring the contract back to us as soon as possible. And I do understand it's gonna be an emergency type of contract to make sure this, we get this done quicker rather than later, correct? Oh, since you're nodding your head, I'll take that as a, yes, for the record, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, that is correct.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Lauren.
All right, and, uh, Councilmember Orlando, again, items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, comments.
Yeah, that's just a thank you to Ray Lynn and her staff, um, and to all of the first responders on getting together, working this issue out. Um, these sometimes always have, doing this a while, as you guys know, they always have bumps and bruises along the way. And I think the bruises and the bumps are a little bit less this time than they have in the past. However, if there are areas for us to improve, I'm okay, and I think the council's open to that and the staff's open to that. Please bring those forward and let us, you know, dialogue and do discussion on that. If there are some issue, you wanna at least entertain this again, because this is, the MOU process is a moving process. We've changed it at least three or four times, at least I know, or maybe more, Mayor. I know you've been on, on the last at least twelve years. So, uh, they, thank you very much for working with us. I think it's a very, very good agreement. Um, we'll see now in the next, uh, next go-around. So thanks a lot. Appreciate all the work.
Additional comments on this item by, yeah, I just say too, I'm, I'm always, uh, Ray Lynn. I think you do a great job and the professionalism of our, of our, uh, unions as well. I've, I've heard good things about this process and, uh, look forward to continuing to provide great service to our community through our first responders. So, thank you all for being part of that. Council, that's the last thing that we've got on our agenda for tonight. We've got, we'll be voting on these items and sounds like reviewing some of these items that have been asked for some more information. So with that, that concludes our meeting tonight.